Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call the order of a regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, June 4, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Madam Clerk Bettis, can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember McCarr.
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Show Councilmember Kerwin absent and excuse, please.
I will.
Moving on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the council agenda for Monday, June 4, 2018, at 7 o'clock PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes, 6-0. Moving on to item five, community events. I'm going to call up Monica Fulton, our Community Resource Director.
Hi, Mayor, Council, thank you. I just wanted to give everyone an update on the Fitness Court fundraiser through Patronicity. I am very happy to report that as of this afternoon, we have raised $32,430 of our $50,000 goal. So that's really great. The Family Resource Center is a presenting sponsor. The Garden City Supervisory and Professional Personnel Association is a gold sponsor, as well as the Senior Volunteer Committee thrift store. Diamond Home Healthcare in Plymouth is a silver sponsor. And we have a couple of bronze sponsors as well. And I'm gonna look here at my phone and see if I can find it. Garden City Cafe and Med Account Management. And a relative of mine, my niece, Amy Fulton, and the Garden City Library are all sponsors as well. And as well as Mayor Walker and Councilmember Jacobs and a lot of other residents that have donated. So that's really fantastic. So we got a few more weeks to go, and I'm super excited. I know we're gonna meet our goal so we can get a $50,000 match through the MEDC. One last thing I want to mention is this Friday, the Maplewood Center will be closed for an all-staff training until 4:00 PM, as well as the library. So all the library staff, everybody who works inside Maplewood, including the dance program, will be attending an all-staff training with the police department on dangerous intruders in the building. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna bring up James Lentz, our Garden City Library Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Garden City. I just wanted to mention real quick that it's time for summer reading. So you can sign up for summer reading programs at the library. The kickoff is actually going to be on Saturday, June 16. We're doing the Story Stroll, which has been very successful the last couple of years. Parks and Recreation are very generous in this setup in Garden City Park. So come out at 1:00 PM for the Story Stroll. Our summer reading programs are, of course, geared primarily toward the children and teens, but we also have an adult summer reading program, so all the residents can take part. This year, something new we're doing with summer reading is we're offering an American Sign Language Club. They'll be meeting on Wednesdays at 3:00 PM. We did get a small grant to help us put this on. It's limited to 30 students, and I believe they've set the ages now at kindergarten through fifth grade, so we don't get overwhelmed. But look for that, that should be really great on Wednesdays at 3:00 PM. For more details on summer reading programs and all the great stuff we have going on, pick up a copy of our newsletter at the library. I'd also just want to mention that the library is seeking a renewal of our operating millage on the August 7 ballot. We will be having three informational town hall-type meetings for the public. The first one will be Thursday, June 21, from 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon. We'll have one on Saturday, July 14, from noon to 1:00. And one on Monday, July 23, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And then again, as Monica or Ms. Fulton had mentioned, the library, as well as the Maplewood Center, will be closed on Friday. Since the training goes to 4:00 and the library normally closes at 5:00, we're going to be closed the whole day. So the library will be closed all day this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to comments from state and county officials. I don't see anybody here from our state representative's office. We got Mary McLendon here from Wayne County, though. From Glenn Anderson's office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, to the city manager, and to the clerk treasurer, to all of the citizens of Garden City. It's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Garden City. As the mayor has said, I'm Mary McLendon from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. And I want to remind you of the coffee hours. It's June 11, the next one, of course, at the Maplewood Center, and it begins at 10:30. And all are welcome to attend. You can share, pick up information, give information, however you need it to be, that's what is there for you. You are all welcome to attend. Also, I want to remind you of the free senior appreciation dinner, which is Wednesday, June 13, and is coming up soon, at 7:00 PM at the Burton Manor, 2777 School Craft Road in Livonia. And if you're going to attend, you have to RSVP and do it very soon, because only 300 seniors will be allowed. And trust me, it's a popular thing. So if you have not called, I suggest that you do that right away. And it's 313-224-8855. And that's Commissioner Anderson's appreciation for the seniors in his district, which would be Garden City, Westland, and the city of Inchester. It's going to be great. And it's for the for-real seniors, and that's age 60 and above. No AARP stuff, because that's 49 and above. But we got the real deal with 60 and above. And you certainly can bring a guest with you. There'll be live music, there'll be free food, and it's just a good time for everybody, beginning at 7:00 PM. Be sure to RSVP right away. And what a great party. It's free, free, free. And it's at a nice venue at that. So all are welcome, and you are appreciated. Also, it's just, everything is just not for seniors. I have the Wayne County Parks scheduled, and if anyone needs one today, I'd be more than happy to give it to you. But it's all kinds of activities for all ages, young, old, and in-between. Everybody has something to do at the Wayne County Parks. The schedule is much smaller this time. You can keep it on your person and have it very handy, so you can look at it. But it just has all kinds of information, activities. I'm not gonna go through all of them. If you need one, I certainly have some with me. But I do want to point out a senior fun fest that's coming up soon, and it's Saturday, June 23. And I know that Garden City is a senior-friendly community. And it's Saturday, June 23, 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM, at the Nankin Mills Park, which is in Westland. And that's, that will begin at 2:00. If you need tickets, you can get tickets. It's Erico 734-326-5282. And again, it's gonna be fun, food, bingo, entertainment, all kinds of demonstrations, just fun for all the seniors at that time. So that's here in the book as well. And of course, it's just bike paths, canoeing, you name it. It's here in the book for all ages, and you're welcome to have one. Also, Wayne County has, on June 9, hazardous waste collection. And that's at the Henry Ford College, 5101 Evergreen Road in Dearborn, just south of Ford Road. And Saturday, June 9, 8:00 AM until 2:00 PM. I think most of you know what hazardous waste is, and that's your household paints, that kind of thing, carpet, floor wax, polish, that kind of thing. That's your hazardous waste, and all are welcome to participate in that. And then for children, I know they like to get messy sometime, but there's a mud day coming up. And that's on Tuesday, July 10. And they can get as dirty and as muddy as they'd like. And it's from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM at Nankin Mills Park in Westland. And that's at 33275 Heinz Drive in Westland. I have flyers for the waste collection, I have it for the mud day, I have it for the senior appreciation, and I have the park schedules with me if anyone should desire. And thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, petitions and communications. I have a communication tonight for the residents, which I'm gonna make a part of going forward every meeting. I had a resident approach me about a week, two weeks ago, said, "Mayor, you know, we don't have a newspaper anymore. Garden City Observer doesn't really cover Garden City anymore. Residents don't know what's going on. We hear rumors, and you can't believe everything you read on Facebook. Why don't you update us at the council meetings?" And I thought it was a great idea. So I'm gonna update, give you some updates of things that we do know that are happening, and I'll do this every council meeting going forward. So the streets that we're repairing this year, we are gonna do Hubbard from Maplewood to Warren, we're gonna finish that. We're gonna do James Street from Lathers to Helen, and we're gonna do Cambridge from Lathers to Gilman. We did make some minor repairs on Elmwood over by the hospital. We did some seam repairs, until we can afford to replace that road to help the rescue units that constantly go to the hospital. So these repairs will be made this summer, as well as some more concrete sections on Marquette west of Craig. Just like we did last year, we did Merriman to Craig. We're gonna do some more bad sections on Marquette going west of Craig this summer. Garden City Ice Arena is getting all-new refrigeration system. That construction's in progress. We hope to have ice by Labor Day. Craig Street from Marquette to Ford Road will be getting a new water main. We got water pressure problems over in that area, so they're replacing the water main. So you'll see the sides of Craig getting dug up. They're not getting the road fixed, that's just water main on Craig from Marquette to Ford Road. City Hall, you notice we're getting new parking lot, new asphalt, police, fire, and city hall. That will be completed next week. You will also see, pretty soon, a new electronic sign out here on Middle Belt for Garden City Hall, and we'll be able to keep you updated with that sign as well. Good news, a lot of people complained about this. City Hall is back open on Fridays. So City Hall is open Monday through Thursday, 9 to 5, and on Fridays, 8 to 4. The reason why we did that is people that work 9 to 5, they can come in on Friday at 8:00 on their way into work and take care of the business. Because people said they worked 9 to 5, when they get off work, the time they get here, we're closed. So if you gotta do, if you're a 9 to 5'er, and you gotta do business at City Hall, you can come in Friday morning at 8:00 on your way into work. Okay, Albertson's Alley was sold, and that is gonna be a banquet hall, we've been told. Planet Fitness is moving into the old Krogers, and construction is in progress right now. There is no update on Kmart. People are looking at it, but nothing's been finalized on Kmart. We are gonna get a new McDonald's next year at Ford and Middle Belt. They were gonna start this year, but they came up with some environmental issues with the old Firebird Gas Station, where they gotta clean up the soil. So they're gonna be working on that this year, and they don't want to start construction in the winter months. So they plan on starting construction on the new McDonald's next spring, and it will be completed next summer. But they gotta, like I said, they gotta work on the environmental issues at the corner of Ford and Middle Belt. You can also check for information on our Garden City website, gardencitymi.org. And we're on Channel 12 on Comcast, Channel 18 on WOW, and Channel 99 on AT&amp;T. So I hope this gives you some updates, and you hear it from the city instead of on Facebook. And each council meeting, I will, I will give updates like this, so the residents know what's going on in our city. I hope that helps. Okay, we will move on now to item eight, our public hearing. I'm gonna bring up our DPS Director, Kevin Roney, to talk about the sidewalk program first, because I know a lot of people are here for the sidewalk. Maybe he'll answer some of your questions before you come up. But I'm gonna bring him up, and Ryan from Hennessy, the engineering company, to explain the sidewalk program and, to the residents, what we're trying to do.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council. I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan real briefly, just the broader picture for the residents who may not know is, this is the third or fourth year of the program, and a consultant does the project inspections, the project layout, administers the change orders, any pay estimates, and that sort of a thing. And with that, I think the question is probably more about the parameters for selection. I'm gonna let Ryan address that.
Okay.
Good evening. The past three years, we've gone through the entire city, and we've addressed all of the major trip hazards throughout the city, everything that's been 2-inch displacement or greater. So now, this year, we're now going district by district throughout the city, starting in what we call Maintenance District Number 1, which is everything north of Ford Road and west of Merriman. There's not enough money in the budget for this year to do that entire area. We're probably covering about 60 to 70 percent of that area this year, and then we'll complete the rest of that next year and move into Section 2. So it'll take several years to get through the city to address all the items. So basically, now we're going back through and addressing all the remaining deficiencies with the sidewalks. And that would include, it would still include heaved sidewalk due to trees and displacements at the joint. Now we're looking at half-inch or greater on the displacement of the joints. Any deteriorated joints where there's a wide gap horizontally between sidewalk slabs. Any cracks within the sidewalk flags. A deteriorated surface, it might be spalling, where you might either see some flaking or holes within the sidewalk, the surface itself. Usually, we look for, if there's holes, usually 2-inch in diameter or greater, or an inch in depth or greater. Or if it's a very rough surface on top of the sidewalk. Also, if it's sloped the incorrect way, if the sidewalk is sloped towards the home and not the street, that causes ponding. We will address that as well. And anywhere where there might be any patching, any asphalt or cold patch that might exist in the sidewalk, or if someone has, where there is a displaced joint and they've made a ramp there, that is considered deficient, and that would have to be replaced as well. Those are basically the parameters that we're looking for as far as deficiencies with the sidewalk program. We sent notices to the residents about 10 days ago through U.S. Mail. Everybody was given a preliminary estimate of what it would cost to replace the sidewalks. This year, the one flag of 4-inch sidewalk is $175 per square foot. That's compared to $247 last year, so it has come down quite a bit. Sidewalk within the driveway has to be 6 inches, and that's at $189 per square foot. Residents have the option of doing the work themselves with their own contractor. They have until July 9, per the notice, to do the work themselves with their own contractor. We ask that they contact our office to inspect that, to make sure that the work is acceptable, and then they can be taken off the list. Otherwise, the work will be done by the city after July 9, and then there'll be invoice for that work on their winter tax bill, and then they have the option to pay it off in full or in payments, which will be approved as part of the assessment here tonight. And I'll entertain any questions or allow the public to...
No, I just wanted to explain before they start coming up.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing for the sidewalk program. This is your opportunity to make a comment or a statement. This is not the opportunity to go back and forth with council members. If you have a gripe, you don't think you have to replace your sidewalk, you shouldn't have to, leave your address with Allison, and the DPS Director will show up at that address and reevaluate it. So if any of you are here because you feel your sidewalk doesn't need replaced, make sure you leave your address with Allison and somebody from the city. More likely, Kevin Roney, our DPS Director, will come by and, and talk to you. So at this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing for the sidewalk program. State your name and your comments. Anybody wishing to speak on sidewalks? Yes, sir?
Counsel. Ms. Bettis, residents. Tony Richard, live on Bridge Street. Thank you, sir. I already forgot your name from Hennessy.
Brian.
Ms. Brian, thank you. I was curious about the parameters. I'm a little curious of when they, when the, at least on my street, there were two younger girls that were walking along. What kind of training did they have? If you're telling us that it has to be a half-inch, I saw no instruments. And just in front of my house, I have two dots here, I have one brick that's raised higher than both of those, no dot. My neighbor, same thing. There's inconsistencies up and down my street. My family, we take walks almost every evening, and there's inconsistencies throughout probably the four blocks that we walk nightly. Were the girls that were walking, and I only say girls because that's what we saw on our street, did they have proper training? Did they have instruments?
Mr. Richards, address, counsel.
Okay.
Like I said, leave your address and somebody to show up.
Well, I figured he could answer that. Does counsel know if they had measuring instruments with them when they were walking, and what kind of training that they had to come out and survey?
Like I said, we'll have somebody come to your house.
Okay, well, just open answer for everybody. Also, when it comes to permits, whatever the price may be, can we get, say, several neighbors all together if we go through the same contractor and just pay one permit price instead of four of us paying $185 each? Because it would be the same contractor, you're checking their work, you're not checking the work of three or four separate contractors.
I'll have to ask Kevin Roney to answer that.
Okay. And would you happen to know the contractor that'll be doing the work for the city?
I don't know, we haven't done the bids.
I didn't think that it said in the letter, did I?
How many is on there? Two, three?
Okay, if it says in the letter, I got the letter here, I just didn't see it. I don't recall seeing it. Okay, so we put out the bid for several, then?
So all these questions that you're answering, asking, Ryan's listening to them, he'll come up last and answer everybody's question.
Okay, good job.
So he's got your questions, and we'll bring him up again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Anybody else wishing to speak on sidewalk? Yes, sir?
Hello, council and residents. Don May from, I live over on Cambridge. Some of you know me, my wife and I have volunteered for years in PTA and coaching, baseball and basketball and everything. So we're very much in favor of Garden City, but I, I think we need to reevaluate this whole sidewalk position. I walked some streets, and even driving on the way here tonight. And we're talking literally hundreds of dollars from most residents, from a huge number of residents. Mine, which isn't too bad, which we can reevaluate, $1,200. I don't have $1,200. My sidewalk's not even that bad. I can see there are some dangers. I've walked around some of the streets, and there are some where the tree roots have pumped them up. They're dangerous. We don't want our kids to be riding their bikes and being knocked down. But the fact is, I mean, you know, we're Garden City.
Yep.
We're a, not a wealthy community. Most of us can't afford to come up with hundreds of dollars toward this sidewalk campaign. And God knows there are other things that we could be putting towards. We have to pay for all of our sports, we have to pay for, for stuff for every one of our kids. We, my wife and I happen to be raising two of our grandchildren, have for, for the last nine years. I'm on a strict budget, we don't have that. But almost more importantly than that is that I agree with the last gentleman. I don't think the evaluations are fair, and I don't think they should be quite so stringent. I think the dangerous ones are easily seen. I think we gotta cut it some slack and reevaluate this whole position.
Make sure we have your address.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on sidewalks? Yes, sir?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kirby Holt. I live on Rush Street here in Garden City. And I was talking to one of the members, I believe it was you, the mayor. I said, "I understand when sidewalks are bad, they need replaced." Years ago, I got tagged and I had to replace some because tree roots, and I understood that. But when it comes down to that much, I would love to have somebody come out and relook at it. Because there's people with grass growing in their cracks, three or four times that. So I'd just like to have somebody else come out and take a look.
Again.
Thank you.
Make sure we have your address.
She's got it.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Hello, council, my name is Ray Mathis, I'm a citizen. I also received a letter, mine was over $2,000, and I absolutely cannot afford that. I have pictures of my sidewalk as well, with how straight everything is and how well-kept it is. And compared to all the roads around my neighborhood, you're gonna bust your tire, your rim, your suspension, it's all, it's all trash. You can't drive home, you can't drive to work. And the sidewalks around my house, I mean, you can see, it's totally straight and flat, all down, all of them. And I've left my address, so please come out and reevaluate me, because my estimate was $2,138, and that is way over my budget. I absolutely cannot, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yes, I live at 31705 Bridge Street. And is Mr. Kern here today? Sidewalk Coordinator?
Well, Ms. Roney's our coordinator.
Okay, 'cause I got a letter with his name on it.
Oh, Ryan Kern is, he's the one that just up here.
All right, and I've been trying to get ahold of him now for a week, Mr. Kern.
He's here.
And he won't answer my calls, won't return my calls. And what I'd like is a copy of the estimate. Is that possible? I mean, whenever you get an estimate, you usually get a copy.
He'll answer those questions, he's gonna come up.
Okay. And what are you gonna do about the neighbors that got their power washer out and washed off the orange circles? I mean, is your record that accurate? No, I thought about asking the neighbor, though.
So what's, we didn't get your name.
What's my name?
Yeah.
Mickey Mouse? No, William Pochek.
Okay.
I'm not here to turn my neighbors, and I'm just wondering what you're gonna do about it.
You're supposed to give your name when you first come up, and we didn't.
And like I say, I would like to see this estimate, how accurate it is.
Okay.
Because I, I also, $1,800. I live on a corner lot.
Okay.
And what are you gonna do about the people that don't have a sidewalk? They're exempt?
We'll, we'll have him answer that as well.
All right, and I still got a few minutes, huh? Is there any kind of grant, state, federal, that possibly a senior citizen on a fixed pension can get? I mean, I'm all for fixing the sidewalk, I just need help.
Yep.
You know, like... You know, like the gentleman said, you know, $1,800 is a kick in the wallet. You know, and I learned a long time ago, you really want to hurt somebody, hit them in the wallet.
Yep.
Okay. And this payment plan, is there any, like, interest fee, loans? And another thing I noticed, I walk. I have a dog, I walk him. About 70% of the problem are trees. You know, lifting up the sidewalk, cracking them. And I'd say about 2/3 of them are on the city easement. So shouldn't the city help us out with this? I know we need trees, you know. I really don't want to see you cut them all down. But quite a few of the dots, the orange dots, are where there's a tree. And like I say, about 2/3 of them, in my estimate, are on city property. I myself have a... What do you call them? Dutch elm, and it's almost dead, and it's on city property. I have mentioned it to the guy that drives around, the ordinance officer, I believe, and he said he would tell the proper people, "Come out and take it down." Well, one of my dots is where this tree is. So why should I have to pay for that? I mean, if I was rich, I wouldn't mind. I'd pay for a street, I'd pay for a sidewalk. But I just don't have that kind of cash laying around.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else? In the back?
My name is Robert Fitzgibbon. Live on James Street.
Robert, what was it?
Fitzgibbon.
Robert Fitzgibbon, okay, thank you.
My main issue is, I don't have a problem with replacing the sidewalk, but when my road is three feet higher than my sidewalk, concrete's only as good as what's underneath it. And in two years, it's gonna be sloped back again, and you guys are gonna be hitting me again. I do have Brad coming out tomorrow or sometime this week, I hope. My ditch has not been touched or serviced since 88. I know for a fact, living here most of my life, we used to have machines come out and actually, like, grade it so it would run to the main drain. This... These are pictures of my swimming pool that sits on top of my sidewalk, and it's really nice when it turns to ice. So I don't have a problem doing the concrete, but I don't want to do it every two years.
Okay.
It's... And I agree with the inconsistencies, I really do. I did this work for over six years. I mean, and I walk a lot, too. This one's orange, 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 and it's... Wow. What happened? They run out of paint? Anyhow, that's about it. Biggest thing is that whole road down there west of Merriman on James. It's two to three feet difference in height, and that water just... And it doesn't move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes.
Linda Skoroff on Bridge Street in Garden City. I have to agree with these people with the inconsistencies. I've already talked, well, emailed Roney and also, I guess, I get one to Kern. But they drove around. The guy sits in the car, he drives around, says, "Oh, yeah, click, 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 click." You know, these are the slabs, very inconsistent, which was one of my complaints a couple of years ago, even 20 years ago. So my question is, how can you really see the condition of the sidewalk without walking on them? Even I had a hard time finding some of the hazards, and I'm walking the sidewalks. There are no inconsistencies in how the slabs were targeted. Some houses were missed altogether, some had some slabs marked, but not all of the hazards. And some of the hazards that were marked, well, I just shook my head because I couldn't see any hazard whatsoever. What about Merriman Road? If you walk up James, Bridge, Cambridge, that's where all the dots stopped. And then you get on Merriman, hazards all over the place, and nothing is marked. There were a lot of slabs that are marked that had cracks that really aren't any type of hazard whatsoever. And there are some slabs that were missed that were equal, if not worse, in the cracks than the ones that were already marked. There's no rhyme or reasoning to the way these things were marked. Common sense on this project is not being utilized. One home on Bridge has a large lot that is mostly grass, but one section directly in front of this house has absolutely no... Or has a sidewalk, excuse me. Some of the slabs are marked on the sidewalk. For what reason? No one, like, no one, will use this sidewalk unless they choose to walk across the grass, on the section, onto the grass again. We have many seniors living in my area who can't walk anywhere because of the sidewalk issues, not caused by the hazards. I have a 90-year-old neighbor who walks with a cane and does walk from Bridge-Moller area to the library and also further down to Hubbard. She has absolutely no problem with the sidewalks, or what there are of them on her route. She has a major trip issue when the sidewalk ends, and she has to go down and up again on the culvert to get to the street when walking across the street, because there are no non-existent sidewalks in places. What value is there in tripping... What value is there in fixing non-major trip hazards when you can't go anywhere? Our streets are not paved in my area, so there are no continuing sidewalks on the rightaways. How can someone in a wheelchair, motorized or non, cross a street? There are major hazards for everyone, and more so for them, and yet you're not addressing that. I'm surprised that someone from the American with Disabilities Act hasn't raised this issue with Garden City and probably some of the other cities. Garden City has made no attempt to address this truly... To make it a truly walkable city. I'm a runner, and I also walk in the neighborhood, and I have issues at times trying to cross the streets, going through the culverts. You're running on the sidewalk, and all of a sudden, you've got to come to a dead stop because you don't know what's in that culvert, the grass and everything else, the holes. When it rains, it becomes like a little river, or it's a massive mud pit. So basically, the city's message to its residents is, "We will make sure you can walk our sidewalk, if there is one, with a trip hazard no higher than a half inch, or a crack that is absolutely causing no issues, but you are on your own trying to cross the street to the next block, or trying to navigate, even walking an entire block because of no sidewalks, or no sidewalks back to..." But you go from sidewalk to no sidewalk to a sidewalk, and that's major trip hazards. The only way to get from one block to another in our areas is to walk in the streets, and we all know that is a major trip hazard. In the winter, trying to cross a street that has no right-of-way access is impossible because snow being piled up from the sidewalk, being shoveled to the end of it and no further. Another issue is that sidewalks are not walkable because of overgrown shrubs, etc., grass, anything else growing in these sidewalks. And that has not been issued. So when a lawsuit results from a fall and trying to cross the street because of these issues, such as the no right-of-way that goes from the sidewalk to the street, who's the one who's gonna be sued? I would appreciate it if the city would put this on hold, the sidewalk project, to take time to reevaluate this project in our area. Sit down, or even better, come to our neighborhood and try and figure out how you would walk the sidewalk to no sidewalk to sidewalk again, and trying to cross the street with culverts, not just as a normal person, but try it... To envision it as a person with special needs. I agree that some slabs are in major need of repair, and yes, they should be...
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
They should be addressed. Filling in minor... There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to use our own filling. You're saying in the paperwork that you can fill in holes and everything else. Why can't you do other types of trip hazards? They last for over 10, 15 years, and I have neighbors that can prove that. Your contractor only guarantees his work for two years when somebody else can put their own fix in and last 10, 15 years.
Thank you. Anybody else? There is a three-minute time limit, folks.
I'm Diane Painam, daughter of Emily Jablonsky. I'm speaking on her BF because she can't... She's gonna be 86 next month. We're at 31546 Rush Street. And I agree with the inconsistencies because I went out there and took pictures and looked at them myself at the end of our walk before the next house starts. There was a larger, you know, grade, and that one wasn't marked. And they were gonna replace three of ours, which the middle one was broken, and there's really no grade, you know, for somebody to trip on in between them. And then by the driveway, there's one by the driveway where there's no tripping hazard because people walking... The sidewalk ends anyway. It doesn't go to the next house towards Warren. There's no sidewalks along Warren Avenue. So we're at Moller, Russian Moller, right off of Merriman and Warren. The actual roads are James, Moller, Warren, and Warren and Moller. A lot of cars come off to try to avoid the light and all the traffic on Warren. So they... That road is so bad, it's almost... It's all cracked up, it's hardly drivable. And the same thing with James and Moller, it's all cracked up. So I did get ahold of Kern, I think it was... His name was Mr. Kern's, and he said he was gonna look... Come and look at our house and our situation because, in my opinion, this sidewalk thing needs to be reevaluated. First of all, $175 to $185 per cement square is pretty hefty. Number two, you didn't give us enough notice. My mom doesn't read, she's got macular, so I have to do all her bills, all her reading and everything. I don't know when the notice came. I'm pretty sure it only came about a week ago because we just saw two guys standing outside last week. And that was the day they marked orange circles on the sidewalk, and then bam, we're gonna get hit in the next month or so with $903 estimate for repairs on the sidewalk when, you know, there's other things that are way more important in the sidewalk that we have really isn't that bad. I agree with this woman that just spoke. All of those culvert, all of the sidewalks end, and you've got all of the tree lawns, all the culvers leading up to the streets. It's all mud and snow in the wintertime. I mean, it's somebody, you know, somebody who wants to stay on the sidewalk and cross the street. We should be looking at those. We should be looking at those. We should be looking at the roads first, and then we should be looking at all the culvers, and then worry about these sidewalk repairs because citizens can fix really bad sidewalks themselves. If you're saying that it's the citizens' fault or it's gonna fall on their homeowners if somebody gets hurt on the sidewalk that is their property, that's the risk they take by not fixing their sidewalks. I think we have misplaced this sidewalk project, in my opinion. I think you ought to rethink it, and I think you ought to have maybe some different bids. But we found out just within the week that we'll get this assessment, and that's not enough time. You really... This thing should have been... If they've been looking at sidewalks for three years in Garden City, in my opinion, you didn't give the citizens enough time to plan how they're gonna pay for this assessment. She's on fixed income, you know, we can't afford it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hello, counsel. My name's Larry McCall. I live at 31919 James. And I do love our neighborhood. It's nice, it's quaint, it's cool, without curbs and stuff like that. But our roads are absolutely terrible. I've lived there for 20 years, and nothing has ever been done but a shovel thrown in a hole. And it... My sidewalk, to cause of mine, there's only three that are bad, but it's because of the duck pond that is there every year. I've had ducks there for 19 years, and ducks come to the same spot. So just saying, I think we could address other things rather than the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Yaxress Martinez. I do agree with everybody, but I guess long point here, too. I kinda just want to know, while everybody's considering what's gonna be done about the sidewalks, are we gonna be given additional time to try to get these fixed? Or like we talked before, try to get together so we could get one contractor? I do think that it was really short notice that we were given. And if we could just really consider everybody's, you know, situations here because I know I can't afford it, and it's just really hard for a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jenny Lambert, James Street. I'm on the other side of Merriman, a lot of my neighbors here. And I was astounded when I got this in the mail.
Please speak only when you're at the podium, it's hard for us to hear. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I feel that our roads are worse condition over behind Merriman. On the other side of Merriman, back on James, where I live, and through there, then, the sidewalks are very hard to drive on. I know I heard you, we're going to be doing some work on those. I didn't hear specifically in my area, and I know this is about the sidewalks. So I just wanted to be one more voice to say that the $756 that I would be assessed, I don't feel is fair. I would like to have that reassessed and just be another voice in a disappointment to have a big sidewalk replacement.
Thank you. Anybody else? You can only come up once, I'm sorry. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call Ryan Kern and DPS Director Kevin Roney back up.
Well, we heard a lot, and I took pretty good notes, but I'm gonna have to get the information. I believe everybody was filling out their questionnaires and all that. And the ones we've got, we will... Ryan and I will get on those starting Wednesday, hopefully Wednesday. And we'll get with everybody, and every last one of them, we'll get them answered.
Can you answer any of these questions that were asked tonight?
Before Ryan, the idea of sharing a permit, if we can... If three or four contractors can go together, of course, I gotta check this out with the city manager, and you got one contractor, and he's gonna form like three or four on a morning, and there's one forum inspection, and then he's gonna pour them in the afternoon, and there's one final inspection. You know, I can see some... I can see showing some flexibility that way, but we have to review that internally. And Ryan, go ahead.
All right, to answer some of the questions. A contractor that's doing the work is G.V. Smett Contracting Company. They're out of Brownstown, Michigan. This'll be the first time that they've done sidewalk program here in the city. They have done work in the city previously, but they do specialize in sidewalk and driveway work as well as full road reconstruction for municipalities. Our inspections were done back in March and April of this year within this section. They were done by inspectors from our office that have 30-plus years of experience. They're retired from Wayne County Road Department. And then following that, when we came back here recently to mark out the sidewalks, those were done by some of our younger engineers. When we did the evaluations, we have a report for each property that shows which sidewalks are to be removed and replaced and why those are to be removed and replaced along with measurements. So the people that were out marking are following those. And then if they did have any questions on anything, they did contact myself if they did have any questions or thought something might not be correct on that. I am happy to meet with any resident that has any questions on the sidewalk program. I've had several people call me within the last week, and I have met with some. And I was out last Friday to about 10 different locations. And I'm happy to go and meet, and if I think that it's something that shouldn't be taken out and removed, we will gladly remove it from the program. Although, the ones that I did visit on Friday, they're all remaining in the program. But I'm happy to come out here. I'll be out here later this week, and I can make an appointment with you. Phone number, if you do have any sidewalk concerns, there is a phone number set up for that. It is a city phone number, and it's 734-793-1804, and I do check that daily. I do have several phone calls to return from late last week. Unfortunately, I was called out of the office for the majority of the day today, so I wasn't able to return all those calls. So whoever didn't get a returned phone call yet will get one tomorrow morning.
Okay, what about people that don't have no sidewalks now? That was one of the questions.
Those that don't have sidewalks now are basically, I guess you could say, grandfathered, and those are older properties. At that time, sidewalks weren't required when the homes were built. When we do go in to do road improvement projects, we do fill in those sidewalk gaps, and we do put in handicap ramps. So in the area between Merriman and Hubbard, Maplewood to Warren, there are no handicap ramps at any of the intersections. So when we go in to do any road improvements, handicap ramps are added in. For example, when we do Hubbard Street, which will probably start in July, early August, handicap ramps are being installed at all the intersections, and all the sidewalk gaps are being filled in. I believe it's the city's ordinance, if any improvements are made to that home, they're required to put in a new sidewalk. I'm not sure if that's... Most communities, that is the case. I'm not sure if that is here, but... I'm not sure if that is here, but, I don't know if Kevin might be able to answer that. But if you do have a sidewalk, and it does end at a location where there is no sidewalk, unfortunately, it is still the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that sidewalk, even though that sidewalk might not go anywhere. Someone may still use that sidewalk and then walk along the grass on the adjacent property. And if someone were to trip, the city and the homeowner can be liable for that. So it's important that those, those deficiencies are addressed. As far as trip hazards are concerned, actually, trip hazards happen more when there's a half-inch to an inch displacement over a two-inch displacement. A two-inch displacement's easier to see, especially if you're running as far as your gait. Actually, more trip hazards do happen between a half-inch and an inch, surprisingly enough. And it is for ramps, it is an ADA require, it is ADA federal law that there cannot be more than a half-inch displacement, or those are supposed to be replaced immediately.
ADA is American Disabilities Act for the residents. What about payment plan, grants, time to pay? How much time do they have to pay? Is that a Allison question?
I can try.
Go ahead, Allison.
What we have done historically, what council has had, is to allow a five-year payment plan. So the cost that you assess is assessed over the five-year period. Each assessment will be specified, and then we'll have another public hearing in regard to that. And those will not be billed, for the last five years, they've been billed in December. So the first bill for the project that would be this summer will not be until December 1st. And that will be a partial bill. There is interest, it's nominal, I believe it's 4%. And, yes, because we're voting on that tonight. So it's 4% interest rate. If you do not wish to pay the interest rate, you have the opportunity to just pay it all at once. And I believe, and Ryan would have to speak to how long that is, but I believe each of the people who are assessed have the opportunity to find a better deal and, and have someone else do the work instead of the city.
So they can hire their own contractor, or-
Yes.
-go with the one the city's using?
There are no grants, to my knowledge. And other than that, that's the same installment plan that each person has.
And that price is the, the same price throughout the city with this contractor-
That's correct. That's correct.
Somebody's asking for a bid, it's so much a flag, right?
Correct. We did bid this project out. We received, I can't recall how many, I want to say seven or eight bids from contractors to do this work. We went with the low bid. I will say, with this being the fourth year of the program, this is the lowest cost of the four years. The past three years have ranged from $196 up to $247 per flag, and this year, we're down to $175.
Okay.
But I guess also, the contractor, or the homeowners do have the option too, if they go on their own. They can, for those sidewalks that are heaved or displaced, they do have the option of hiring a concrete leveler as well. And if it's done properly and we inspect it, we do, we do approve that type of work as well. So they don't necessarily have to move and replace. Our contractor will not do the leveling work, but we have had some homeowners level out their sidewalk, and it has been acceptable.
Okay.
Other questions that came up, the power washing of the orange dots, we have record of every property again, so if, if for whatever reason those dots are removed, we do have record of which flags do need to be removed and placed, and the contractors will have copies of those as well. Trees, even though the trees between the street and the sidewalk are within the city right of way, it is per the city ordinance that the homeowner has to maintain their sidewalk, regardless of whose tree it is, unfortunately. So, when we do go and remove sidewalks that are caused by tree roots, we do cut out, we do dig down and dig out all the tree roots that are under the sidewalk. That may not have happened in the years past, but we do remove those tree roots out. If there is a tree that is right up against the sidewalk, if it's a hazard, usually within two feet of the sidewalk, we will remove the tree. We have done that in past years, where the, where the tree is right up against the sidewalk, we do remove the tree. There is no cost to the homeowner for the removal of that tree. That is covered by the city. And we do look at that, and we have noted some locations where the trees need to be removed as well.
Somebody follow up a little bit more too. It's just like with homeowners, you're responsible to cut the grass on that easement between the sidewalk and the street, and you're responsible to shovel the snow. So it's the same thing. That's why you're responsible if the tree also lifts up the, the cement. So, it's always been that way in Garden City. The homeowner is responsible for the easement, even though it's city property. That's why you cut the grass, that's why you shovel the snow, it's, it's the same thing. So even though it's a city tree that raised it, you have to replace it. I just want to get that information out. I know everybody don't like to hear that, it is what it is, but that is the rule on that.
There was a, a question on how to obtain an estimate. Everyone should have received a preliminary estimate with the notice that they received two, about 10, 14 days ago here in the mail. If they didn't, give me a call, and I will provide an estimate. But again, the estimate is $175 per flag, with the exception of any flags that are within the drive approach, those are $189. So those estimates are based upon the number of flags that we marked for removal. Some of the estimates are higher because they're corner lots. Unfortunately, there are several residences in this area that have corner lots, so they have twice as much sidewalk to maintain. And again, we did not cover every, we, we did evaluate every street within Section 1, north of Merriman, or west of Merriman and north of Ford Road. However, again, we didn't have enough funds to cover the entire area this year, so there are some streets that were not marked because they'll be done next year. We aren't able to cover every street. Merriman Road is one of those-
We do different sections every, every year.
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
I would, seems like we have a lot of people saying there's inconsistencies and a lot of addresses. So I would like you and Mr. Roney to go back and check these addresses and double-check these.
Yes, we will do that.
Because when I get this many people, it kind of tells me there may be an issue. Usually, you get one complaint or two complaint, but with this many people, I would, I'd like you guys to go back and, and, and check and make sure-
Sure.
-everything's correct.
Sure, we'll take a look at that.
You agree with that, Mr. City Manager? So, all, those of you that have inconsistent, make sure you have, we have your address up here.
I think that covers everything.
Yeah.
Kevin had anything else?
Yes. If you build a new home in Garden City, a sidewalk is required. That question came up a couple minutes ago.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Is there anybody that did not speak on the sidewalk public hearing that still wanted to speak? Yes, ma'am. I hope we answered some of your questions.
How many bids did you actually get?
Seven or eight, I believe.
Okay. We're not West Bloomfield. We don't have this kind of money. Everything that you're imposing on us, you're imposing what, bigger cities that have money. This is a middle-class, lower-class neighborhood. We're doing the best we can. So adding that extra, how is that going to hurt us? You can't fix my street. My street's, I'm surprised we haven't gone all the way down to the other end of the earth. It is horrible, but you want to fix a sidewalk? Money. Whose pockets is that line? Whose pockets is that line?
We're not here to line anybody's pocket.
Okay, well, I would like to know. Who's, who's getting paid for this?
You can get your own contractor, ma'am. If you think you can get it done cheaper-
No, because I don't think I believe it.
Get your own contractor. You don't have to take our contractor.
But it doesn't need it. Out of all the things Garden City desperately needs, sidewalks are not top, top priority. You need cops, we need streets fixed. My car fell apart hitting one of your potholes. I'm sorry, 10 of them on my way home. Broke off the caliber of my car. That's how bad it is. That needs to be done first, before you even consider, absolutely consider that. Sidewalks are, like you said, putting us in a West Bloomfield neighborhood, and that's all we are. Everybody here's on a fixed income. Almost every single person. But you know what? How many mo, how much, hundreds of dollars have gone into replacing tires, brakes, and every single damn thing in my car's broke down because of the streets. Fix those first. It's what we're here for. Fix those first. Everyone's here because they're going, we don't have the money. Adding 18 or $2,000 to my taxes? You want to do that? Do the roads. Not a sidewalk, do the roads. I went by and looked at what you were talking about, and I'm like, there's nothing here. So I wondered, so I'm asking, whose pocket are we lining? Since this is just, of everything, in two years? I get a 20-year warranty on my damn furnace, you're going to give me two years on a sidewalk? Money again. Who else? I mean, think about it. I mean, who, how else can we do this? I don't have the money. I can't even walk these streets. And you know what? I want you to go drive around and see how many people are actually on the sidewalk. Zero. Everyone uses the road. Every single person uses the road. Your sidewalks are useless and a way to make money. That's how it works. It's just simply a way to make money. Because of all the things you could choose, that's what you chose? Why don't you choose other things? Why don't you follow the ordinances? Why don't you do what the people of Garden City have came here for, to say, please-
You have 15 seconds, ma'am.
Please reconsider what you're doing. None of us can afford this. Not a single one. And if the city sidewalk, city should be paying for it. And I know, don't give me all the, oh, it's yours, blah, blah, blah. You know what? If it's mine, I'm leaving it. If it's yours, you fix it. It's not my problem. Think about it. Why am I responsible for a city sidewalk that isn't actually mine because it belongs to the city? Not me!
Okay, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoke yet? Leave it, it's a, you can talk to them at the end of the meeting, they're, they're right here, Ryan, and, and we got to move on. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close out the sidewalk public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing for our 2018-19 budget tax levy. Anybody wishing to speak on the 18-19 budget for Garden City? Okay, anybody wishing to speak on the budget? Yes, sir.
Tony Richard on Bridge Street. I just have a question. Does the council have a copy of the budget to give to the public so that we can see what would be approved? Would that be available tonight of what you guys are voting on?
I have one copy for me. It's kind of big, so no, I don't have a copy for everybody.
It's on our website.
It's on the website.
It's on the website. It's on the website.
All right, good deal. Will, will I be able to get to that through my mobile? Because I know using my phone and using a laptop are two different things, trying to use the city's website.
GardenCityMI.org.
Yeah, I know, but the website using your phone is like 1980. It's different trying to use a laptop and a mobile. The city website is not mobile-friendly. So. Yeah, I know, it's completely different if you use a computer, normal computer as opposed to mobile. Mobile's horrible.
Okay, any other question?
No, I was just curious if we could see that before you guys started talking. Thank you.
Anybody else on the budget? Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing. Move on to item nine, consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 9A1 and 2. Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item B1, special assessment, 2018 sidewalk program. Councilmember McCarge?
I move to adopt the following resolution determining the necessity in directing the preparation of a special assessment role for 2018 sidewalk program.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Comments from the table?
Mayor?
Ms. McCarge?
First of all, the people who came tonight, we appreciate you coming, and I know that staff will be looking into your concerns. So it was important that you came. There's a couple of things that I, I'm not sure if people know. If someone is, falls on your sidewalk, it's not your, you get sued and the city gets sued. So it is a, an issue with the city. You have one home, how many, we have 11,000 homes. But beyond that, there is a safety issue, and part of homeownership is making sure that your home is safe. Now, I, I, the, the talk of the inconsistency, or, you know, whether or not your sidewalk is, you know, safer, I mean, should be part of this program, I, I am very pleased to hear that they are going to come out and look at your house again. So, but that is why I'm supporting this program, because I've been involved with this community enough and know how often this city is sued because of sidewalks.
Thank you. Anybody from the public?
What about the summer taxes? Taxes, summer taxes.
Summer taxes.
What about the summer taxes?
Uh, sidewalk. No, sidewalk.
The sidewalk won't be on the summer taxes, no.
No?
No.
Yes, sir.
So, you're saying that if someone trips on the sidewalk and you're sued, right? I would be sued, you'd be sued. Does the city also take half the responsibility for repairing the sidewalks?
Should I, no, we don't.
No?
No. So it's all up to the owner of the residency to repair the sidewalk, whereas if something were to happen, it, then it is split?
Sir, we don't shovel half your snow, we don't sho, we don't cut the grass.
That's fine. I understand.
Same thing, it's the same thing.
Okay. Just wanted to know. So if something, that's fine. All right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Again. No budget on the mobile app, just to let you know. I couldn't pull it up anywhere on mobile, so. But with that moving forward, I would ask that the, that the table, table this. Obviously, there's a lot of inconsistency, and granted, it is part of the program, but if it was just me, maybe this gentleman here, but there's a lot of people, the mayor agreed with us, until we find out why there were so many inconsistencies, I think we should table this because Mr. Kearns and his crew are going to come to the 12 addresses there. What about the 122 people that couldn't make it tonight? They're going to get screwed. They're not going to reevaluate the mistakes that they made on their homes. They're just going to come to the 12 people that are here. Everybody else is going to get screwed. Excuse the, the language, but that's really how it is. They're not going to come and walk the street again. They're going to come to make us happy. So I would ask that you guys table this until we can come out and reevaluate that neighborhood. And that's, I, the mayor agrees with that, that there's obviously some, some problem with inconsistencies. It's not just one or two, you know, big mouths coming up here.
If I could answer that?
Ms. Lynch?
What we're voting on tonight is when the sidewalk program happens. We're not talking about the individual parcels. We're talking about the assessments being divided into five annual installments.
Oh, into the payment, okay.
You got it. That's what this is about.
We're not talking about the inconsistencies.
Okay.
We don't have any of the addresses, we don't have the inconsistencies. That's going to still play out. What we're doing is setting up payments.
Got you. In that case, let me backtrack, and I ask for the council to move the date of, I believe it's June or July.
July 9.
That's a month away. If Mr. Kearns is busy and he can't return phone calls for a week, and, I'm not saying that it's his bad, he's busy, does he expect to get a full crew to walk the entire neighborhood within a month to reevaluate this? I would ask that you guys push that date further out and let's actually reevaluate more than twelve houses. And I'd like to see the engineers that came and not the college girls that were out there with spray paint in front of my house and actually using real instruments, not just taking a guess going, "Looks good to me, looks good to me," and really do a knockout job. If we're paying good money for Hennessy to be on this, the city's getting whitewashed. You guys are just, you're throwing tax money away if we're paying Hennessy to go out there and just play a guessing game. So I would ask that you guys push the date forward, give them time to reevaluate, give the citizens more time to come up with money, because they're not all mistakes, so you're obviously going to have some fees, and that gives them a little bit more time to save up, knowing that it's coming. And so, how'd I do on three minutes?
Your time is up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm agreeing with a lot of the people. My mother is on very fixed income. My father passed away, she's by herself. This is a tough time for a lot of people. I get the trip concept. People are walking, they're going to trip on a crack. They're not going to trip on a crack that is clearly not raised in any way. That's what her sidewalk has. It has a couple of cracks in it. A little bit of grass grows in it, it's flat. There is nothing, she doesn't have raised sidewalks, she doesn't have broken sidewalks. I had a house in Canton. We had the same thing that they did ten years ago. But we're a beautiful community with people that had very deep pockets, and we pulled together and did exactly what you're saying and had contractors come out and do it for us. We didn't go with the city. We beat them by some, not by a lot. They were reasonable in the estimates that they got for us. We, back then, I had several slabs of sidewalk replaced and it cost me six hundred dollars. This is, I mean, I get inflation, but it's not that kind of inflation. Our economy is in tanks right now. Things shouldn't be costing so much more to do. And helping out all these seniors like this to, to come out and fix the major trip hazards that are something like this, where they're going to, you're really going to fall over it, I get. But little cracks that are in the sidewalks, those could be put off for another round later, when maybe they are a trip hazard at that point. Why do those now?
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, motions on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item two, traffic control order for Manor Park and Hubbard.
Mayor?
Councilmember Squires?
Yes. Before I ask about this, I do have a question. On the traffic control order number four-six-nine, it states Manor Park Drive from six hundred feet west of Benoy.
Yep, and that was what I was hoping to come and correct this evening, is I should say east. So prior to the vote, if council would just take an acceleration for, for traffic control number four-six-nine, it should be six hundred feet east of Benoy.
Okay. Yeah, that's the main thing that I wanted to make sure, I didn't want to pass it.
Chief, you want to explain to the residents what we're doing here?
Absolutely. Many, many years ago, we changed our use of Manor Park to residential and a park. However, during the course of that time, we didn't update the traffic control orders to, to reflect the different use. Now it's residences with a park across the street. Currently, there's a, no parking prohibition on the books. The signs are taken down, but the prohibition is still there. Second, what we are allowing right now is vehicles with over four axles, and really what we're concerned about there is commercial motor vehicles of a heavy weight and a large size. So what we have right now is vehicles parking on the streets, but then the same heavier, larger vehicles with over four axles making their way down the streets. We'll have a soccer game going on while vehicles parked on the street, and that's not a safe circumstance with those larger vehicles, because, you know, as you know, Manor Park and Manor Park Road is just north of an industrial area there. So what, that area does attract semis, larger commercial vehicles, but based on its current use, it's not safe for those vehicles to continue to go down Manor Park.
We're going to stop the semis from going down there.
What, what the remedy is to, to allow the off-street parking and then to prohibit vehicles with over four axles from traveling from six hundred feet east of Benoy on Manor Park to Hubbard and Hubbard South to Block, so we're going to prohibit that. Basically, it's just, it'll be in Manor Park and then L down just along Manor Park Park. So no semis there. But still allow for the use along Hubbard where it is industrial.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work on this.
No problem, council.
Okay, motions in order?
I was just going to say, as far as Hubbard goes, where's the stopping point on Hubbard going north?
Going north would be Block Street. So south of Block, if you permitted, north of Block on Hubbard, it would not.
Okay, perfect.
I just need a support. You made the motion.
Support.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to move a resolution to provide Garden City Council approval for the decision, I'm reading the wrong thing, I think, of traffic control order three-sixty-eight as attached, the amendment of traffic control orders three-fifty-one and three-fifty-two as attached, and the creation of traffic control order four-sixty-nine as attached.
With the changes that the chief mentioned, right?
Yes, with the changes that it will be east of Benoy rather than west.
And I had support from Councilmember Earl?
Yes.
Any comments, other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item four, our eighteen-19 budget ordinance?
No. No. Item three?
I'm sorry, number three. I'm sorry, supplemental appropriation capital bonds, I skipped one. Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation for the Capital Projects Fund, increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of two million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars for the 2018 capital improvement and refunding bond.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarrick. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes six-zero. Okay, item four, eighteen-19 budget. Councilmember Squires?
I move to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2018 to 2019 general appropriations and tax levy ordinance.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. This is our budget for July first of this year to June thirtieth of next year. It's seventeen million dollars to run the city of Garden City. Used to be twenty-one million, we, back in oh-eight, when we, the recession hit, we cut, cut, cut. We don't have as many employees. Did a lot of cutting. This is just our general fund. This pays the employees, pays the utilities for all these buildings. There is no money in this general fund budget to fix our roads. We know we got bad roads, folks. The roads get fixed from the gasoline tax. Every time you put gas in your, your car, so many cents per gallon goes to Lansing, and they give us enough to fix one road a year, and you see us fixing one road a year. We agree our roads are bad, that's why we had something on the ballot to see, because everybody said, "Let's fix the roads." We don't have the money. It takes money to fix the roads. We, we know we got terrible roads. But it, it missed by fifty-one votes. There's going to be another, we come up with another plan that will be on this August seventh ballot to fix the roads. So it's up to the residents. If you guys vote it through, we'll, we'll have the money to fix the roads, and that will improve the property values. And so, keep that in mind for August seventh. But this is the budget to run the city. The roads get fixed from the gasoline tax. Two different entities, they're not, there's no money in this budget for the roads, and I want you guys to understand that, because everybody says, "We pay taxes, how come our roads are crap?" And we don't get all the money that you pay. The schools get a portion, the county gets a portion, the library gets a portion. Schoolcraft College gets a portion. So if your taxes are, say, two thousand, we may get about eight, eight or nine hundred of that, the city. And that's what we pay the police, the firemen, the DPS. So I hear this all the time, but I just want to educate you. This is our seventeen million, it's an operating budget, general fund to run the city. There is no money in those taxes to fix your roads. You guys need to call up the Lansing and gripe that they're not giving the local communities enough money to fix the roads.
How about a shoe tax to fix the sidewalks?
Anyway, only, please, only speak when you're called to the podium. But I wanted to explain that. So anyway, so we got a motion and a second on the budget? Okay, any other comments from the table?
Yep. Mayor?
Yep.
The council meets several months and debates about what our priorities are, because like every household, too, there's only so much money, and that's all you have, and that's all we can do. When I, as a long-term employee of the city, one of my biggest complaints was when times were good, we did not take care of the infrastructure. And then when times got bad, of course, we had to cut back all the employees, and our infrastructure was still bad. And what I have seen over the, you know, last few years is that we, even though the economy has gotten a little better, this city has continued to work on the infrastructure, the sewers, our parking lots, you know, so that we're maintaining the city's home. Having said that, I, we have not, I, I was concerned that we would expand our personnel too quickly, and I didn't want, want to do that. And we did not in this budget. We have made arrangements to have a fire marshal that, for safety reasons, but we didn't, I mean, other department heads have asked for more employees, and we said, you know, "Not, not yet." I retired as Parks and Rec Director. We turned down the request from the Rec Department to hire someone full-time. I am sad about that, but I support it. I support it. So I, I think the council has been responsible. But having, again, having said that, we can only provide this community with the services that we adequately can fund and have staff to do. So, because I heard a lot, especially when we made these, a lot of staff cuts, well, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? We can if you're willing to pay for it and can pay for it. But we can't have a hundred recreation programs when we have one full-time park staff. And that's okay until we know that the economy is getting better and we can afford it. But that's the only thing I ask the citizens, don't complain about lack of services if you aren't able to support our community with, with taxes. So that's my, I, I think the council did a good job with this, with this budget. I think that we were responsible.
And I want to say one more thing. If we went out and fixed all these roads and got the city into debt and spent money that we didn't have, you guys would want to hang all of us. Okay, it's just like your house budget. You got a budget, you got to live within the budget. We do not have the money to fix the roads. Again, it comes from Lansing. If we did that, we'd have an emergency manager in here if, if we, if we didn't run the city properly. I'm just trying to tell you, people don't understand, they, you know, roads, roads, roads. We live in this city, too. We drive down the same roads. The roads are crap. We agree. We got to find a way to pay for them. There's going to be a plan coming forward on August seventh. I would hope that everybody would look at that and, and vote accordingly how, how you want. But if it gets voted down, we're still going to just fix one or two roads a year with the money that we have. The roads you see us fix every year, that's the only roads that we can fix with the money that we get. So we want to come up with a better plan to fix several roads, but it's, you're going to be asked to vote on that on August seventh. So I just wanted to get that out there. Okay, we're voting on the budget, the general fund budget. Any other comments on the budget from the table? From the general public? You got to come up to the podium, ma'am. And this is on the budget?
No.
The question on the floor right now is just for the budget. Any questions on the budget? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seeing none, we have a budget for eighteen-19. Passes six-zero. Item five, road closures for the Great Bacon Run? Mr., Mr. Plomaden wants to talk on it first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Tonight I have before you is a proposal for a temporary road closure for the day of the Great Bacon Run. Inside the packet is a breakdown of all the roads that'll be closed temporarily the day of the event. Also, in front of everybody is a copy of the postcard that will be going out to all of the homes affected the day of the Great Bacon Run. We will be sending out two mailings. This postcard will be going out twice. It'll be going out the week before the Fourth of July, and it'll be going out this Saturday, or the weekend before the run. So citizens of, between the major roads of Cherry Hill, Merriman, Ford, and Middlebelt, all the homes between those four major roads will receive this postcard twice. The Great Bacon Run, again, is going to be held on Saturday, August eleventh. It's going to be a great event. We have a lot of nice activities planned within the run itself. So that day, we'll have temporary road closures, as I mentioned. The times of the closure, we will have barricades set up at all of the roads indicated on the postcard. I know it's a very small postcard, but it's in your packet, and it's also on the website, which is greatbaconrun.org. And the road closures will take effect between seven AM and eleven AM. We've worked closely with the Police Department and Chief Gibbons. We've driven the course. Me and my staff have driven the course multiple times, reevaluated a couple sections of the, some of the roads and intersections. So we feel very good and very confident that we've addressed the safety of the runners and the citizens within the areas of the, of the course. So I'm here to ask and entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions on the table? Okay, motions in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve the temporary road closure plan for the 2018 Great Bacon Run, scheduled for Saturday, August eleventh, to include road closures between the hours of seven AM to eleven AM affecting city streets between the major roads of Ford, Cherry Hill, Middlebelt, and Merriman, and to authorize the Parks and Rec Director to execute all necessary measures for the safety of all runners and walkers of the event and citizens of Garden City.
Support. Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Any other comments from the table?
Mayor, I just have a question. How have the sponsorships been going? And what are you going to use the funds for?
Thank you for addressing that. Yeah, sponsorship's been going very well. We have a tremendous amount of support from the community, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention Garden City Pawn stepping up as our title sponsor of the event and contributing four thousand dollars to this year's event. We have a number of other sponsors, I won't list them all, but they are all on the website. The proceeds to this year's event will go to benefit Garden City Youth Sports Organizations, which includes GCYA, GC Hockey, GC Soccer, and the GC Figure Skating Club. So we're hoping and anticipating for a turnout. My, my goal is five hundred participants. We're right around a hundred right now. We usually, races traditionally get fifty percent of their registration about two weeks before the runs, if, if that's, history is any indication, so we're, we're very excited. And I did want to mention, I brought a few extra postcards. I'll leave with Ms. Bettes. I just have four, if anyone in attendance wants a copy, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes six-zero. Item six, bid award for the ICE Arena Screen Wall and Footings. Councilmember Jacobs?
I move to approve the attached bid award in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars to Dave's Contracting, Inc. of Dearborn, Michigan, approving work to install a screen wall to surround and secure the new ice ring compressors and to authorize the Parks and Rec Director to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. And this is a planned expense that, in the, in the... In the bid, yeah. It just had to be bidded out. In the project's what I meant. Any other comments from the table? From the general public?
Mayor, the, the word screening, this is a metal screening, is it? I mean, is it, you have, there's some brick?
So what they're doing is they're matching the existing brick wall on the south side of the building that faces Cherry Hill. The contractor will construct two walls to match and basically pick up the same scheme of the existing brick to surround the new equipment.
It just seemed like, when I first read just the cover, and I, I thought, "Whoa, that's a lot of money for screening, until I realized it was brick. I just wanted people to realize that.
Cooling tower, stuff like that, the screen. Okay. Any other comments from the table, from the general public?
I was just glad that you mentioned that it was in the existing bid, because when I saw that, I said, now, wait a minute. Everybody knows you've got to put a wall up to protect it.
I said that just for you, actually.
All right, then you're going to be all right. I won't jump on you tonight, maybe.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seeing none, that passes 6-0. Item 7, Great Lakes Water Authority Contract Amendment.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the attached amendment number three to the Water Services Contract with the Great Lakes Water Authority. Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Kevin Roney, you want to explain a little bit what this is all about?
Certainly. Over 100 municipalities buy their water from the Great Lakes Water Authority, and we all have the same contract, a model contract that was worked out back in 2009 with then the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department. And the contract allowed for reopening the contract periodically to look at the values that you order your water from as far as the volumes, maximum, rate of flow. And this was a standard reopeners, and I did find some issues with the drawings from the original contract that they corrected, and we tweaked our numbers down very slightly. Really a very minor tweak on that. And so this is just a request for the council to approve the amendment to the contract.
Okay. Any other comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item 8, bid award for ready-mix concrete.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to award the contract for furnishing ready-mix concrete to Superior Materials, 30701 West 10 Mile Road, Suite 500, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48336, in the amount of $40,000 per year through December 31st, 2019.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Ms. Roney, you want to explain this to the residents?
Yes, this is the concrete that we would use, our DPS would use for concrete road patches, curb repairs, after water main breaks, wreck the pavement, and that sort of thing. It went out on the mitten site for bids. We only received one bid. I contacted the other company that usually bids, they just missed it, the deadline. But amazingly enough, they shared, they sent it in anyways, so I added it to the bid tab, and this company, Superior, this time was lower than them. And it's also, I checked around a few other cities, and it's right in the ballpark. So that's why we're recommending approval.
Okay. Any other comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that one passes 6-0. Item 9B, Construction Administration Services.
Craig Avenue is next? I'm sorry, which one is next?
I'm sorry, Craig Avenue Contract Award.
I'm sorry. Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to award contract to Britta Gare Contractors of Plymouth, Michigan, for the Craig Avenue Water Main Project in an amount not to exceed $529,760, in accordance with correspondence dated May 21st, 2018, from Hennessy Engineers Incorporated.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. This is the water main I spoke of earlier that's getting replaced on Craig Avenue from Marquette to Ford Road. It's paid for out of the water fund. That's part of your water bill that you pay. So that money comes out of the water fund. Do you want to say anything else on that?
Just other than that, it was competitively bid, and this is a project designed to enhance pressures in a particular area. It's not a booster main, but it just adds extra new 12-inch.
We had water pressure problems in that area.
Yeah, in that particular area.
This will solve that.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now the construction admin services for this project.
Mayor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to award the contract to Hennessy Engineering, Engineers Incorporated, to provide construction administration services for the Craig Street Water Main Project in the amount not to exceed $38,085, in accordance with attached correspondence dated May 21st, 2018, from Hennessy Engineers Incorporated.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Any comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 10, Sewer Lining Project 10A, Full Length Sewer Lining Contract Change Order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the change order number one in the amount of $153,030, in accordance with correspondence dated May 16th, 2018, from Hennessy Engineers. Support.
Support.
Some background on this. Several years ago, the city embarked on a $4.4 million program to address sanitary sewers that were found to be deficient after a citywide sewer televising program. It was divided into two contracts, a total of $4.43 million. One contract has been completed. The other one is going to be completed this month. On the one contract, we added locations, plus we also told the contractor we had wanted him to come to our yard for water as opposed to filling up out in the system because that was causing rusty water complaints. So we're asking for this change order to be approved, and it's for the amount of $153,000 on a $4.4 million project.
Yeah. That's liquid force trucks that you're seeing all over the city. They're lying in the inside of the sewers, which will give them several more years of life, and we don't have to excavate and dig up and then replace sidewalks and streets and sod and everything else. So it's a pretty good program. Any other comments from the table, from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 6-0. And then the construction admin for this project, 10B.
Mayor.
Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to authorize an increase of $57,360 to existing agreement with Hennessy Engineers in accordance with correspondence dated May 15th, 2018, from Hennessy Engineers, Inc. of Southgate, Michigan.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table, from the general public?
And again, this is because of the added locations primarily, more than anything.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Hearing none, motion passes 6-0. At this time, we'll move on to item 10, Public Comments for Items That Were Not on the Agenda Tonight. If you wish to speak, come up to the podium, state your name. There is a three-minute time limit, and these are items that were not on the agenda. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. One, how Garden City patches the roads. Prior to the election, some of us neighbors were talking, and it just seemed pretty obvious that the patching kind of went downhill, that they weren't patching as much as they were in our streets. After the election and your proposal flunked, there was hardly any patching, or they'd patch a small hole and then go on to the next one. So again, the word inconsistent comes up with a lot of things that Garden City does. So our roads are not being patched like they were prior to your road proposal to get money for the roads. Also, what is the criteria for rental homes? I know they're supposed to be inspected every two years. I live next to a cesspool, pretty much, and if they're inspected every two years, how could this happen? Basically, the roof has been leaking at this house for three, four years that I know of. There are things that other rental owners have that this house didn't have to have. So there's inconsistency as far as how these houses are being looked at. Right now, the house has now been turned over to the bank, and I live next to a cesspool. If there's any water that goes through the drains, you smell sewer, you smell raw sewage and everything else. So I'd like to know how, if the city can do, if you guys can talk about it, how you go about inspecting rental houses, and why are so many rental houses so far behind in their water bills? Why isn't the city cracking down on these rental homes, the people that own the homes? There's three homes, four, there used to be, around me. Their water bills are in excess of over $1,000 because nobody pays, and they're all rentals. So it's like, why isn't the city acting on this? What kind of a criteria is there for these homes and the people who actually own these homes? Not so much the people that live in it, but the people who own these homes. Why isn't the city coming down on them more?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for items that were not on the agenda tonight?
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for that report you gave at the beginning of the meeting. I liked that because, you know, a lot of times I'll ask you all before the meeting, and then I don't even have to come up here. And the new city manager, I'm going to give him a little compliment. I asked him about the recycling, and I know he's been busy in the new job and all, but he did come back and tell me what I wanted to know. So thank you, and you're off to a good start. Just keep going. And I promise I won't be no harder on you than I am on them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Baco.
I've got four houses, hotel, and four houses empty. Four houses empty, and one hotel, four houses empty. I had a birthday by Friday, so 71 years old. 71. 71 years old.
You?
Happy birthday, Mike. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
71 years old.
Anybody else?
All right, my question is, you want to special assess everybody, right? Why don't you special assess for the roads then, instead of the sidewalks, which is more important? You special assess anyways when you do the roads. Whoever lives on that road has to pay for it, so then why don't you do that? Just out of your special assessing, regardless, your special assessing. So I would rather pay, throw my taxes a little bit to go towards the repair of my car versus anything else. But why don't, special assessing is, that's how it's done.
Okay.
And I think that'd be a very good option, you know, for that special assessment. And I think people would be more, wouldn't be here going, I can't believe this.
Okay.
So please, just, you know, special assess it if need be.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got just a few things and maybe some answers to some questions that just came up, but there's been a group of people that have been watching these meetings live from our former home in Florida that I'd like to introduce. They're here for their first meeting here in the front row. My beautiful wife, Alexandria, goes by Ally. Our daughter just starting college, Alexis Monet. Michaela Rose is our high school senior, incoming senior. Big boy, Colton Trent, over here is on his way to be a junior. And then Carter Ridge, going to ninth grade. Both of them last week just completed their Eagle Scout awarding, so the 14 and 15-year-old Eagle Scouts. And then we have our last one, we call Baby, Larissa Sky, is on her way to eighth grade. So we've got a couple of runners here for the Bacon Run, so Dan, he's got some applications for them. So I'm glad to have them here. Feel a lot better having a family here, so. And of course, their grandmother, the Iron Maiden, is sitting at home in Pennsylvania watching this live, as she watches every meeting also.
Are we moving transplants to Michigan?
Yes, yes, we are.
Should've waited till January to move.
It was hotter this past week in Michigan than it was in Florida, so this hot weather is new to us. So a couple other things real quick. The 4x4 program, we talked about it before. It's a neighborhood improvement program. If you recall, we're picking out some areas in the community. We picked out three areas for the fall, or for the summer, I'm sorry. The first one is going to be, if you look at the monitor up top there, right behind City Hall, basically. That's Harrison, the Middlebelt, and Ford up to Maplewood. That's the first area we're going to be focusing on. We're going to be doing maintenance and code compliance throughout the community, but that area for the month of June is our focus. Public Works is already out there starting to do some tree trimming. We're also looking at Public Works filling in some potholes in those areas, replacing old signs and poles, painting some crosswalks and curbs, checking the fire hydrants, flushing them, and maybe some painting. Police in that area, looking for warrants for arrests, sexual predators, make sure they're registered, checking out lights at night for some night drives, patrolling the area, maybe some stray animals. Code enforcement, really looking for compliance on grass height, abandoned vehicles, the rental facilities, our homes that are not being taken care of. That's a big area for code compliance, looking for unsafe conditions. Also, fire departments looking at offering some simple home inspections for fire safety throughout that community, that area. Building Department, if there are some businesses in those areas that we're focusing on, looking for inspections and licensing, making sure everything's up to par. Water Department, checking meters, you know, that, issues that homeowners may have, they're going to be heavy in that area. And of course, planning and zoning, looking at CDBG opportunities for low-income residents in some areas, and also zoning review as we made some changes in the zoning. So we're still working throughout the entire community of Garden City, but this is our focused code compliance and Public Works and safety and everything else. So that area is June, then we're going to be moving to another area in July and August, and then naming the next three areas in the next few months. So it's just a way to really focus our efforts. Instead of putting out fires throughout the community, let's hit sections to take care of things. Also, wanted to mention the road millage, as the mayor had mentioned. August 7th, it'll be a five-year plan for $15 million to try to hit the worst roads that we have. The first information going out to the residents is going to be in your water bills. The water bills go out in three sections, so one is going out in the next couple of weeks, then in July will be two more. All 27,000 residents will be able to receive that. There's some information there. We're going to have a number of community meetings throughout the city in late June and all throughout the month of July. The question about having a special assessment, you can't have a special assessment across the whole city unless you're doing the roads across the entire city. If you're going to give a special assessment just to the roads, in the past, the community was charged $27 a foot for their road to be redone. Unfortunately, the cost really is about $400 to $500 a foot, which means the entire community was helping to subsidize the roads that were being done, even though the residents were being assessed that lived on that road. So as we look for future assessments, if this road millage doesn't pass, and we say, okay, if this road wants to be done and the citizens want it to be done and they're going to be assessed for it, you're looking at potentially $400 to $500 a foot, not the $27 that was charged in the past. That was just kind of a red herring starting point to have an investment into it, but the community really subsidized the difference. So the special assessment unfortunately doesn't work directly. The hope is that we can at least get the worst roads on their way to being replaced through the road millage that's up for vote this August 7th. And again, a lot of time and a lot of meetings and a lot of information's going to be put out to go either way and answer a lot of questions. Just the last point here about sidewalks. You know, I'm certainly moved by the speakers that were here tonight when it comes to cost. That's why I took a trip back to talk to Ms. Roney and Mr. Ryan about how we can really relook at this program of what we can do as far as not just the evaluation, but maybe the minimum standards we have, because it is true, we have a lot of other expenses and things that we should be focusing on, but at the same time, you can't have sidewalks that may be major trip hazards and some other issues that come along with it. So it is that up and down concern of, we want the community to be safe, we certainly want the homeowners to be able to afford some of these issues that come into play. I've only been here the last couple of months. I wasn't directly involved in the sidewalk issue until more tonight of hearing the concerns, so I'll be certainly more involved. And I think we'll come back to the council in the next couple of meetings of maybe how we're evaluating these concerns and maybe pushing the dates, as was asked by some residents, of making sure that we're in compliance and we're not here to really stick anybody for anything. It's really just more of a safety factor. Maybe in the past, we're a little more aggressive in getting things fixed, maybe we're more lenient, I'm not sure at this point because I haven't been directly involved. But that's something that we'll be taking a look at, especially because of the speakers that we had come up tonight, so I appreciate that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. You need more kids.
Yes, only five. Well, we had four. We picked one up on the way up here.
We've got an empty chair in the end there.
Let me say on behalf of Mayor and Council, we want to welcome your family here to Garden City, and we're glad you're here, so, welcome. Okay, Councilmember McCarge.
My kids would have killed me. It's been a long meeting, nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Lynch.
Just two quick things. If you didn't find your forever pet last Saturday at the flea circus, you have one more opportunity, and that's this Saturday. one more opportunity, and that's this Saturday, the ninth of June, at Tipton Academy at Florence and Middle Belt. Poet is going to be there with their adoptions. Uh, please come out and look and see if there's a cat or a dog that you might like to be a part of your family. Also, um, twenty dollars for microchipping for your animals. So if your animal is not microchipped, please come out, twenty dollars is a good deal. And then, the other item is Dance Express Recital, is going to be Wednesday, June thirteenth and Thursday, June fourteenth. So if you're interested in coming and watching our budding dancers, please come on out to O'Leary Auditorium. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question for, uh, Ms. McLendon. You said the dinner was at seven, it's, it's from five to seven, isn't it, the senior appreciation? Just so people don't...
It's from five to seven.
Five to seven, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, and then the other thing, I wanted to thank all the residents that came out. Uh, it may seem like we don't listen or hear or do anything, but we, we do hear you. Uh, so we, we do, would like to help as much as possible. Uh, and the only other thing is, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Father's Day, the dads, uh, we will not have a meeting before then. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Okay. Jeez, I hope you're not going to make them sit through every single meeting. Give them a break once in a while, okay? Um, I too want to thank the residents for coming out and speaking. You know, we are residents too, and so they, they will tag us just like they do you, if we have bad sidewalks, you know, among other things, but, um, you know, we do hear you and we do sympathize with you, and, um, that's, I don't know what else to say, other than that. Um, but thank you for coming out, and...
Okay.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Earl?
Yeah, I just, I'd, I'm interested to hear, uh, when we go out and reevaluate what we see, because two thousand dollars, you're talking another tax bill at that point. Um, so that's a lot of money. I know, uh, having a corner house, I can already see that I'm going to have to start saving some money, so, um, the only other thing I really want to say is, and I missed my son's, um, honor awards for school tonight, so I want to congratulate my son, Soren, on a good job this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bettis?
I just wanted to say thank you to the people who participated in Relay for Life. That was this past weekend, um, and, uh, we should be proud of the twelve years of, uh, service that we've gone to, that cost. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, that leaves me. Um, little bird told me that it's, uh, Councilmember Squires' birthday today. Happy birthday! And she's only forty-eight, that's pretty good. Um, I too want to thank the residents for Relay for Life. Uh, this city has donated over one million dollars in the twelve years to, uh, finding a cure for cancer, the, the American Cancer Society, for Relay for Life, and that's just phenomenal. Water bills on rentals, uh, if they don't pay, it gets rolled over on their taxes. We do get our money. It, the, the water bill goes on the taxes. The water bill is actually the landlord's, uh, homeowner's responsibility. If his renter doesn't pay it, the landlord has to pay it, and if the landlord doesn't mail in the check, at the end of the year, it gets rolled over on his next year's taxes. So we, we get the water for the water, water bills, I just wanted to explain that. Uh, if you're having problems with the rental units, rental houses in your neighborhood where you don't feel they're being inspected properly, or they're not, uh, up to par, call the building department, give them the address. We, we don't know about all rental homes, unless people tell us. I mean, we know, uh, several of them, but if, if you know a rental home and you don't think it's on the inspection program, and you know definitely it's a rental home, call up here and, and let the building department know that. Potholes, our guys fill potholes every day, I, I see them all the time filling them. Sometimes we get a heavy rain right after it washes right out and they got to go back, but we do fill potholes, but the same thing. If you have a pothole on your street that's bugging you, call DPS and tell them, I live on Cambridge between this and this, and there's a big pothole. They'll come out and fill it in. Call it in, that's what I'm saying. Call, if you got a pothole, call it in, and, uh, we will definitely, uh, fill it in. Again, we live in the same city as you guys do, and nobody's going to agree with you more than me that our roads are crap. And I'm hoping that, uh, that we pass this in, in August and we can start fixing our streets and making our city look better, safer, and it's going to bring our property values up. You're gonna, you know, uh, again, our, our budget used to be twenty-one million because that's what we collected in property taxes, and then when everybody's property nosedived in two thousand eight, we're only collecting seventeen million. So we had to adjust our budget, that's why we didn't have as many police and firemen and DPS workers, that's why we had to downsize the city so we could live off seventeen million versus the twenty-one million. Uh, we're starting to come back up, the, you know, it's, it's a lot better than it was in two thousand eight, but, uh, we're doing the best we can, we're not going to spend money we don't have. And there's nobody, like I said, is going to agree with you more than all of us that our roads need fixed, it's just how are we going to pay for them? So, I hope you guys all understand that, I, I love that you guys come out, we're definitely going to look at those inconsistencies and, uh, uh, but that's, that's what we're here for, come and talk to us, and, uh, uh, we care about this city, we're residents just like you. So, again, I want to thank you all for coming, and, uh, we will definitely look into that. And one other thing I want to mention, what happens on these roads that, there's a big pond of water, over the years, people want that parking spot in front of their house, so they fill in the ditch on a Saturday or Sunday project, they fill it in, and that's where the water used to drain, so now when it rains, you got a big pond. When we redo the roads, because there's several ditches that were filled in over the years, when we redo the roads, we put in drainage. Uh, so that's one of the benefits too, if we fix our roads, that will take, solve some of these water problems, because they'll get, they'll get sewers put in when the new road goes in.[1737.16]